Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
And welcome to the December 9th, 2013, Commissioner's Court of Potter County. And we call this meeting open. We will proceed on my fourth limb with the word of prayer. And nothing. To God, we thank you for this day, that I'm plenty of our just being your presence and to be in house of all that is tasked and charged for us to do the things that are appropriate for the citizens of Potter County. And we ask that you would go with us out of our minds and spirit disturbing, but you would liberate, or do the things that are tasked and forced. And we ask your blessings of all upon all those individuals throughout this country are experiencing the severe weather, as if you would be with them, keep them, or that the wealth of our business is prospering. Our Lord, as we now have the blessings of being our first responders, that continue to do so, to spend the standard gap for us, and protection of our workers, our military personnel here in this country and in foreign theaters, there are families that are with them. And that's that we continue to be with them, or protect them, or with them, keep them. Now, Lord, as we gather this deliberation, our focus to be for the program for the good of the citizens of all of Potter County, each one, that is with us and keep us in your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Praise the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda we're going to, we're going to the minutes first, the two minutes for the three this meeting.
I have one correction to bring forward to the court, or one suggested addition, item five, the agenda item read Santa Fe Railroad Museum. I would like to request the minute where the court has requested financial statements as per the contract.
Any further physical corrections?
And whether we approve the minutes as correct?
Second.
Okay, probably a little second to approve the minutes, necessary addition to the minutes, pre this meeting, those in favor, Joe Rans, okay, passes five zero. We're gonna take the one item just out of gender patient will be?
Eleven.
Item eleven. Will be the recognition of retirement, and to recognize the retirement of Barbara Snell, county clerk's office after twenty-two and a half years of service in Potter County. We are losing some of the people that are... Barbara, would you come up, please? Barbara, um, has been working for Potter County for twenty-two and a half years, and she is one outstanding.
She is.
Records backwards, forwards, upside down, and like, we're gonna miss you. One, one quick story, about two and a half years ago, I was in the clerk's office looking for some records for a citizen who was trying to get their, their house turned over to their, to their name, to property. And I was struggling going through all these records, Barbara came over there and just started assisting me, and she stayed with me, and she, this was before she knew who I was. I guess we must have stayed there about an hour, going through all the records, we bought off big, huge books, binders, and all the records, and she just literally, just systematically went through step by step, and ensured that I was taken care of before she went somewhere else. And so I definitely appreciate that, the citizens appreciate that, because, again, she didn't know at that time who I was, and she stepped right in. So we appreciate this, these are the type of applause we have, and we certainly appreciate you, we're gonna miss you, and it's gonna be difficult to find someone to step into the place, but congratulations also. And what you're gonna be doing, you said in, out in the hallway, you're just gonna do rest awhile. But for ourselves, and hope that you have us blessed and wonderful retirement, and many, many of you are long here, and can I thank you so much. Potter County specific appreciation to Barbara Snell, being known by these presence that the county of Potter State Protection Division to acknowledge, with considering grateful appreciation of twenty-two and a half years of faithful and diligent service, and extends audience best wishes, and glad bless you, and your citizens.
Appreciate those kind words.
Very, very worthy.
Woo-hoo! Barbara was given her job because she lacked her job. And she did not get it. She liked making the love over.
And they say, sure. All right, item number two, vouchers, to consider and act upon the approval of payment vouchers, process by the county office of office for the period of November 26th, 2013, through December 3rd, 2013, hold over checks, one five, numbers one five two, four five three, through five two, seven one nine, and wire number three oh two, through three eleven, in the amount of two million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second for discussion? I have a couple of questions for the court, both of them, Sheriff from your division, the first one is check page eleven of thirty-seven, check number one five two, five nine four, all data, vehicle repair system program, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Can you help me understand what that is, Sheriff?
The computer that was just went out on our vehicle? That's... It's a program that, that gives the mechanic access to find out any vehicles, the schematics of it, basically to repair the vehicle.
Like a diagnostic?
It's online, online, kind of deal, which is, it's like fifteen hundred dollars a year.
And that, that's a yearly subscription?
Yes. Instead of buying manuals for every, for every vehicle?
Okay, perfect. On that same page, check number one five two, six zero four, the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars, spray gun, bed liner, can you help me understand the need for that versus just a cosmetic?
It says bed, but it's on the insurance footnote, a straight truck, it's about right.
Okay.
I just have one question on that. Page fifty-four, yes, twenty-four, item preference, police badge? Or constable two, any reason for another badge here?
What, what are you guys taking?
This page, yeah, twenty-four. It's a badge off badge, police badge down towards bottom.
For instance?
For a police badge, no matter why, why do we have another police badge here? Does he not have one?
I don't have any reason why I need to purchase them.
Anybody with a, with a magazine? Magazine pouch?
Yeah, that's, that's the old magazines for his service.
I know that, but I would assume he's already had some of those, what's the deal there? Why didn't he have another, especially a police badge?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that question.
The only other item is right below that, for a vehicle jump starter, I was kinda wondering about a liability issue on those, if we were to attempt to start somebody's vehicle and mess it up, are we gonna be held liable for that person's vehicle, even though we may have tried to help them?
I don't think, I don't think so, I mean, I would, that's the, I don't think there's any liability, because, I mean, I guess it's sort of...
Well, if he messed it up, if they didn't wrong, or something like that.
Well, but remember, we've got immunity for a lot of, except in very narrow circumstances, I'm not so sure this is one of those concepts, because when I claim them, it's kind of close question, so I don't, I don't really think we give any liability for that.
You don't think so, that's fine, but I still, I'm concerned about the badge issue, if we lose one, and have to replace it, or what's the deal, and I have to get, get an answer for that? That's the only question there.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll hold you for four, and then second to approve the voucher, the, the, I have a question, if you're in favor, Joe Rans? Passes five zero. Item number three, recognize the insurance report today, anything you want that? So recognize, item four, if you're reporting the status of the railroad museum, Michigan County legislature, last month, we had Wolfman, and he was giving us a briefing on the museum report, and I think that was issues that the commission had brought to us as far as contractual, and some things that were not being addressed, and he was going to come back, I think, this meeting, and share with us, do we have any other?
I know I contacted him last week, and we'll be back on the end of the year.
So do you, do you help me understand what we need to do contractually as a county to request this information? I'm not sure if that needs to happen via a demand letter, but I was going back and looking at some of my documentation, and I specifically requested this information back in September, the court on September twenty-third. We wanted to allot him some time to gather that, the idea was he would come back in October, possibly to present before the court, that obviously fell in November, he presented before the court, wasn't aware that we were specifically asking for financial statements per the contract. Can you help me understand what we need to do to gain movement on that, I'm serious concerned, for close to four hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, I think you need to send them a letter at this time, I don't think, I mean, there's an obligation to report, I'm not so sure that any demand we make of financial information is, is made, is controlled, called contractual item, I mean, what I would do is send a letter saying, here's your obligations under the contract that you provide, this, this report, we request that you do that by sentence.
And can I ask you to assist me with that, and request a fourteen day turnaround time?
Uh, let's think about fourteen days, I wanna look at the contract again, but we'll, I mean, certainly a reasonable time.
Okay, and again, I'm requesting statements back from two thousand and seven, so, seems a little compugible, but I mean, it's, that I'm even asking that per the contract, we did hear to our part of the contract, we have done so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there is another check on that, and then please back with what's been said, so, update please, so.
I'll also address this with a bit.
Item number five, is bail bond board, is considered an act upon pointing, Coke Roberts, Judge County Court of Law, number one, to serve on Potter County Bail Board Board, bail bond board for the year two thousand and fourteen.
I'm going to make this rotate this amendment every other year, and Judge Roberts?
So...
I make a motion that we appoint Judge Roberts, County Court at Law One, to serve on the Potter County Bail Bond Board, the second convention.
Okay, so do it in second, to appoint Coke Roberts, Judge Coke Roberts, to serve in County Potter County Bail Bond Board for the year two thousand and fourteen, those in favor, Joe Rans? Okay, passes five zero. Item number six, is the county attorney's compliance requirements, employee positions, is considered an act upon adding position of compliance coordinator in the county attorney's office to manage new discovery requirements applying to prosecutor, our offices.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you, I, I can tell you, I can tell you I could not be less happy to be asked it without standing in front of you, particularly asking for anything. During the last regular legislative session, as a result of the Michael Morton case, which you may have, might be familiar, legislature imposed on prosecutors a significant, essentially, sea change in the way discovery takes place in criminal cases, that is, the exchange of information between prosecution and defense. Some of it, while it's a significant change, is not particularly honorant, it may be, it's something hassle, but it, I think serves the right idea that everyone goes into the disposition place of criminal case, drives by, and I don't know what the evidence is, I don't have any war with that. What the new statute, those who affect on January first does, however, that adds to, that is a significant concern to us, is it requires, as I think you were briefed on moving through the new server, imposes upon us the requirement to document and present to the court, and have the defendant agree that all the material, all the materials are catalogued and have been turned over. And the problem with that particular requirement is that a plea or a trial cannot go forward until that happens. And so we have been poring back over all the positions in our office, and who's doing what, and trying to decide, is there some that could be, put that on the, on the lawyers, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of time to go through all of the documents we receive in our office, even electronic, and catalog them for a particular case, so that we can go to court and say, look, Your Honor, the defendant has been presented with all the offense reports, all supplements, all videos, all, all the audios, all of that stuff, so we can now dispose of this case. We can either plead it, or take it to trial. And we simply have been unable to find a round hole, we can fit around egg in an office, and so what we're looking to do is that a, essentially a paralegal who has experience dealing with discovery issues, who can track that, that could be their job, is to track that information, put it together, so that our lawyers that go to court are assured that they are ready to actually dispose of the case, because the, this new legal requirement has been complied with, as well as we've lived up to our discovery allegation, we actually have provided the discovery requirement by defense. We're looking to pay about thirty, median market value for a position like that, at the best we can tell, is about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, that would be what we would ask, I think with benefits, it's gonna be around, what, thirty-eight thousand, something like that. And I'm glad to answer any questions you have about it, I will say, we've tried to look at various other positions we have in the office, we figure out, if we shut the ramp, just have it found a way to register.
Let me ask a question, it's always, where the funds would come from? Is there, um, clearinghouse of funds available, like forfeitures, or the eight-liner funds, or something that those monies could, could possibly be used to come from?
Because it takes up to two years for some of those forfeiture funds to actually get the banking account, I'm not sure that they have funds to absorb it at this point in time, until they get another large forfeiture.
We are working on it.
Yes, I'm sure it's coming, but right now, I'm not sure it's available for, we can take it out of contingency, if you chose to do that, but we do have a line item for civil litigation, that we can take it out of, for three thousand in that account.
And this will be a re-curing?
Yeah, so that's in the P O mine, this is an additional expense, Scott, is there any reason this wasn't addressed during the budget process, at least that it was being discussed, since?
Yes, uh, part of it is a lack of foresight on my part, and part of it is, um, I think, as discussion went on about what exactly compliance with the statute would look like, I don't think there was as clear a picture at that time, as there is now. As well as, I can tell, I answered, if we were still doing this in paper, and it was just running stuff off on copier, that might be a little simpler than, as you know, now, we're doing it electronically, beginning, actually A P D this week, is beginning to present their cases to us electronically. And so if, the question becomes, do we print everything off for discovery, or do we move towards production by electronic means, which certainly seems, in the long run, a more efficient, better way to go about that? As that has played out, we've, again, we've looked, we've done organizational analysis, and tried to figure out, is there somebody in house who can do this, and that was our hope, but as it turns out, and the first thought is to have the lawyers do it, but they're already trying to move cases, negotiating with the defense counsel, negotiating with pro states, where they're allowed to by law, looking at cases, screening them, trying to decide whether to accept them, and most of the clerical staff is busy preparing the documentation, and retaining the documentation elsewhere, for instance, previous convictions, and if they have any information to report, it's that. And so, here we are, it, you know, could it, or had, could I have looked at it in the past, and, and foreseen it, perhaps I could have, I will not stand there and tell you that organizational analysis, strategic thinking is always my long suit. I, I'm a lawyer, I tend to look at specific problems and try and address them specifically.
How many employees do you have in your?
Thirty-one, if you don't count me.
And then one statute specifically, what I have difficulty, and I'll just be very honest with you, is I didn't have any backup, any documentation to really prepare appropriate questions, you know, anything?
Article thirty, article thirty-nine, fourth point one, four, of Coke Room Procedures, statute.
Uh, what I'm hearing, Scott, also, is that nobody around this?
I'm sorry?
Nobody around this?
No, no, one way or another, if, if, that's, you know, I understand, I won't be mad if, if I'm told no today, but that's not gonna change the fact that come January one, I'm gonna have to be in compliance with the statute.
Let me ask you a question, is there a possibility that we could get through this year, until our next budget year?
Again, because as Commissioner D A kind of pointed out, we're looking at it speculatively, I suppose, I suppose it's possible, I could not tell you for sure, no, we can't do it. I, you know, come January one, when we're really up and running on this, I'll know, I will say, probably within a month or so, I'll know, I'll have a clearer idea of that, so I suppose I could come back at that point and say, we're swamped, and there's nobody to do this, and we're, you know, and at that point, the sheriff would probably be letting you know, because we won't be able to clear out the jail, by way of doing pleas, and that's what I'm saying. That, that's part of the issue that brings up the idea that maybe it's, at least, for now, if you take us to litigation, because it is, to a certain extent, a liability avoidance issue, as well as sort of tertiary liability avoidance, because if people can't move out of the jail, they create liability potential.
Frank, how many, how many hours you think it would take for a person to do this particular job, in other words, what I'm getting at, could we use a part-time employee?
I can say that, in, we've tried, we've tried breaking down these duties on a paper case, and it takes about six to nine hours to go through a big file, now, we don't usually have big files, I would expect it would be about half that amount of time on an E D O guy, let's say, pretend, because you gotta review the video, as well as, often there's more than one video, if you look more than one unit responds. So, we're probably looking at, at least an hour to three hours of work per case, and right now, all told, by the way, the statute doesn't differentiate between class A, the misdemeanor, class C, these check cases, all told, we're carrying about six thousand cases right now. So, yeah, we will, we will do what you give us the tools to do.
I'd like to see if we had to add an additional employee, I'd like to see it do it on a part-time basis, rather than have full-time, before we have to pay all benefits and all that kind of stuff, see if we give them like that until at least the next budget year, if we have to go that way.
And to that, to that point, the question is, is there a unique skill set, involvement?
Well, I can say that the ideal candidate, at least in my mind right now, would be someone with parallel experience, and with experience dealing with discovery, dealing with the document processing, and categorization, and production, because that's what we're talking about.
So, if we look back, and I appreciate your point, Commissioner, are we talking about full-time with that particular skill set, unless they're gonna be semi-retired, or something like that, it'd be difficult to find someone.
I'm looking at it like, the future for the, for the next year's budget, whereas you could move this person into a full-time position at that time.
We'll see, we'll certainly see if we get some, I mean, again, I'm grateful for anything you'll do for me, and we'll certainly, you know, show along, whatever we can.
And when, when you explore that, that possibility, and if, if we have to go full-time, you know, that's what we have to do.
And I would say this budget, you're so early into it, is so unique, there have already been some unexpected occurrences, one of the sheriff's office, obviously, he's sitting here, and I'm expecting, and my trip for one of the elevators I've heard at the Santa Fe, so I think there's some significant expenditures early on in this fiscal year, that for the core, certainly for myself, is really an unknown territory, so early in the year.
So I guess you would say, can you dribble down a little bit, a little bit longer, with the full-time, until we didn't, didn't identify where we were?
What I, what I, here's what, what I'll, and I'm not one business, I can only make, so I don't want this to be taken as an option, I'll go back, talk with my people, and we'll see, let me explore with them, particularly the people who have better knowledge of the day-to-day logistics of what we're looking at, criminal division lawyers, criminal division staff members, and talk to them about whether we can do this on a part-time basis, and I'll, I will bring it back as soon as that information is available.
One of the things concerns me is that the not doing this, concerns me about not doing this, is that, what's the cost, Andrew, I mean, you know, we're gonna have more inmates staying longer, and that sort of thing, does that cost us as well, so?
Hard to say.
Yeah, I know that, but just because we don't pay it upfront, we may be getting hit back, on the other end, so, that is a possibility.
I will say, I, to take a step back and give you an idea of the efforts that have gone into compliance with this, we have been working with, not only with the Forty-seventh DA's office, but also Randall County, in order, as you know, from when we took the move up the server issue, to, to make a uniform system for case presentation, so that A P D doesn't have to do things differently, Randall County, or the Forty-seventh, do an hour with us. And so we've got some insight into the way other offices have done, have done this, I don't know, at this point, how Randall is looking and doing it, I do know that Randall County shuffled around, they had a secretary, they were able to shuffle around to full-time, or apparently, what should I say, no secretary. So I don't know the, the details of how they did that originally, because, thanks. So what I would, I would, I'll be glad to go back and explore, I, it was brought, I will concede and maya culpa about not providing some backup on it, although I will say, what I can provide is the statute and case numbers, and anything beyond that, probably gonna be respeculative at this point, because we've never had to deal with this before. In the past, if we were supposed to give anything other than let the defense lawyer come in and make photocopies out of file, it was by virtue of a portal, we're getting that specific case, so this, this will be, it will be different, and how that goes, I guess we'll just have to see.
How else can this civil litigation line item be used?
We use that if we have to hire outside counsel, if someone's in county, and Scott has to reduce his salary. And if I could throw this out there, Scott, I know you and I didn't really talk about gambling, but, Nathan Eric and I just talked about it, and it would be pushing... And it would be pushing the envelope a little bit because we are at the mercy of the defense to when the forfeiture money comes in. If after we discuss it, because he might be able to make it six months or so, what he has in his forfeiture account or in his.
Yeah, like.
Yeah. If after he and I discuss it, we do determine that he can afford to take it out of that account, we should go ahead and approve it and then add in the positions of having that for it.
That's a forfeiture account, Carrie?
Yes.
Are those, are those funds restricted?
No, well.
Well, by the forfeiture order, they're restricted for the county attorneys.
I mean, you can use them in, uh.
Yeah, it's possible, yes, they're used for prosecution purposes.
The funding's usually going out is for salaries, so we can't deplete the fund or we're gonna have to get out funds for their salaries.
So what are you saying, something that maybe will all, all rise and then maybe a court is about to, would be able to use the, the origin of that, those funds for this purpose for, I am on pretty good terms?
Right, just depending on, you know, we have to wait for those forfeiture funds to get out of the office, yes.
Yeah, no, and we, I was at, I was at a town too, uh, until, uh, did not know I was gonna be able to get back, uh, last week, so I had no chance to refer to Carrie about the logistics of it.
So just have to be cautious not to run that fund dry because of salaries.
Okay, so speak to us again, Carrie, on what you're asking us to do as a, what's a, a gap between over three six months, if those funds come back?
If Scott feels like his forfeiture funds can support this compliance officer, he would approve the budget depending on that so that he could go ahead and hire someone, right away, if.
I think what you say is contingent on availability of money, approval of a creation position and it would be funded out of a gambling fund. And, uh, you wouldn't hire anybody or actually get underway unless there was money available sufficient to, to cover.
And to have a question, certainly for you Scott, Dave, from a legality perspective of the court designating how you use your forfeiture funds. According to my knowledge, the court could not direct how those funds should be utilized. So kind of what I'm hearing in that motion is.
But we can suggest.
Co-mingle.
Actually, with respect, with respect to these funds, these are not chapter 59 Code of Criminal Procedure funds that, you know, the, the type that, say, the DA has that they just bring you a budget and say, here's what we're gonna spend it on and your recognition is about the extent of your involvement. Actually, you do have the ability to correct the use of Article 1818.
Interesting.
No, no.
The question, interesting.
But it is, but they are, the purpose is still, uh, driven toward prosecution and investigations.
You wanna, people would put like the position like that?
Be aware to get, get a, get a move in, I was pressing.
Get a, alright. And we, I will say, we do have, we do have forfeiture cases in the bottom.
Judge, we have a motion, do we need to?
Can we still have that?
Well, from what Carrie said, we had to approve the, to approve the budget depending on the federal funds that are available.
I don't want to go, but it shouldn't.
For forfeiture funds.
Okay.
We're approving the position.
Of compliance or, if those kinds are, as you said, is obvious.
Okay, is that fair, Judge?
You have that too?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. And would you come back next, maybe our next, Commissioner Beating in Pleasant?
I will.
Lou, would you read that?
To approve the position of the compliance coordinator, depending on the forfeiture funds available, is, is it need to have some?
I would say if you pay for forfeiture funds, uh, as available, that way, if, we won't, we won't bring anybody on staff if we don't have anybody in particular on that forfeiture money.
Okay, so it's generally the position of the compliance coordinator, funds do pay from the forfeiture fund as available.
Yeah.
Okay. We have the most approved that in second. Okay, those in favor, show hands. Thank you, passes five zero.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, item number seven, equipment return is considered active upon purchasing an HP LJ EMT printer in the amount of $1,546 to replace broken in the 184th District Court. Fund be paid from equipment to repair, replace, fine.
Uh, this is a printer that has, has broken and it can't be fixed and we use the specs of the District Court, or the CSCD IT people to get this, the printer we're replacing, we bought for $1,200 back in 2007, so it's a comparable model and it should be able to handle the processing that you.
Carrie, can you confirm the amount in the equipment repair and replace?
We have $7,000.
We have $7,000, $7,000.
And we've moved, we approved the purchase of the HP LJ EMT printers in the amount of $1,546. A second board that are in the 184th District Court.
Okay, it's been moved and approved to, uh, to approve the purchase of the printer in the amount of $1,546. Those in favor, show hands. Item number eight, is considered active upon purchasing carpet for the county courthouse in the amount of $15,217.61 from Interface Americas utilizing backwood contract 391-12 and the box will be used from courthouse project grocery list.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Good, good.
Well, I, I guess this, this project was, uh, the department heads of this building, officials in this building had, had contact with maintenance about, um, putting area rug type flooring in the, in the office spaces because of the, the sound and also the heat issue, I guess a lot of our coal. This was talked about maybe not before the courthouse project was even done. We were told to hold off the doors to see how the accusers were in the building and also the, the heat issues. And so now that they've been in there for a year, we have over and over gremlins of people wanting this done. And so, um, Nick got the measurements and I believe his department has been installing it, so there's no installation costs. This is all corporate cost. And the, the system we're proposing to go with, if you go to the Santa Fe to Judge Barnes's office, there are these squares that don't require any adhesive to the actual floors, so they're not gonna damage the historic floors. And if they, if they become dirty or soiled, you can actually cut them out and then replace them out right back where that one was. And so that's the system we're looking at going with.
Right, yeah, and this cost does include somewhere around in the neighborhood of 20% additional padding stock for that purpose.
The carpet tiles?
Yes, the carpet tiles.
So they don't have the suction type of cups that you can.
They don't have suction cups, what they do, they, they're called tactiles. They, they adhere to the, to the points of the tiles that you're, you're combining. And then the suction of the carpet itself is what will, will keep it in place. And this will also help reduce some of the work that we're having to do with the floors because the casters on, on your chairs rolling around on the wax floors are creating a lot of dust and it's, it also causes problems. Additional funds for that, so.
How wide this way is, do you think, would be?
It depends upon workstation, we have them from 60 inches by 60 inches and some of them are, like I figured for one, the commissioner's conference room in there, we went in there and it was pretty bad as far as the echo also, so. There's any, any workstation throughout the, throughout this building, it was, it was measured for, or there would be a chance, somebody's saying. So it's a total of 88 area rugs, including cherry rooms, commissioner's conference and every other workstation in the building.
So in terms of a visual, and I'm sorry if you're repeating, is it completely replacing the entire floor or is it an area rug?
It'll just be a rug that, that'll be, it could extend two inches out of the person's desk and it could extend 10 inches. And in your office, if your door opens and real top to your desk, so we were very limited to where, where anyone goes. So it's just gonna be essentially an area rug that we set and will make it in the floor, they won't have to elevate the desk, slide underneath the desk, so the chair and the entire workstation will be broken on this area.
So we cut specific to the workstation then, that?
Yes, it was measured in that, that way we didn't have to make any cuts to the carpet tile itself. They're in 20 inch, unless they're 20 by 20 pieces.
And this will address the need that we were hearing from attorneys and judges regarding the acoustics in the courtroom?